Started with our calling our recessed council meeting from February 27th back in order at 5:02 PM. Roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I have Counselor Potenin.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Counselor Skinsich.
Here.
Counselors Polis and Heitzman are absent with notice, and I also have Operations Director and Clerk.
Thank you. We do have a quorum. If I could have everybody stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And we have two additions. I labeled for new business E will be the resignation letter for Tara Reinerson from the wastewater treatment plant. And for F is the bids, the auction bid we had received to accept. We had, this is all considered one, or is it three separate?
Four separate.
Four separate bids. For the sale of the old electric meters, correct?
Surplus meters.
Surplus meters. For item F, or no, that'd be under old business, right? D under old business?
We could put it under D under old business. It's just accepting bids.
Correct. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Moved by Counselor Skinsich.
One second.
Supported by Counselor Potenin. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose say nay. Non-motion carries three to zero. And on to the consent agenda. City Council minutes, the boards and commission minutes, invoices for previously approved projects. We have JPGA engineering, STAN Tech engineering, invoices for the campground, and payments of bills and payroll upon proper audit.
I'll make that motion to accept it.
Motion by Counselor Potenin.
I'll support.
Supported by Counselor Skinsich. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose say nay. Non-motion carries three to zero. And we have public input. Do we have you, Matt, at a slotted time? You're, okay.
Sure, public input, I would just like to request that when Zoom conversation comes up, that I may get to speak to you, unless you want to comment now.
No, when we discuss it, we'll give you that time. Because I'll forget what you say now by then. Thank you, Paul. Any further public input? Thank you. We'll move on to the reports from Mayor and Council. I'm sure everybody's heard of that devastating shooting down in Burnsville. I would like to take a minute for a moment of silence to, in honor of the Burnsville Police Department, the Fire Department, and the residents of Burnsville, if we can. Thank you. The only thing I also have is, last week, I believe it was, Counselor Potenin and I met with the school board, or I should say, the grounds committee for the school about acquiring the property. City's gonna be meeting to discuss that option in acquiring the property here in the near future. Just thought I'd mention that because I did, I was called by Linda, who asked about the school property, if the city was gonna look at... Yeah, Linda Tyson, yeah. From the paper, she was doing an article, so that's basically what I said. We met with the school. The city is interested in it, but we haven't made any official formality on what the city's direction is gonna do. So, we're gonna have a meeting, hopefully, in the very near future to discuss those options. And that's about all I have for now. Counselor Potenin?
Yeah, that's kind of what I was gonna say, but in addition to that, maybe we could get a public hearing on, you know, what route if the people in town wanna get involved in what they think should be done to it. I think we should have a public forum or whatever to let them express their views on what they think, and then we can make our decision on, you know.
We could put it for our next meeting at five.
Like a workshop, yeah. Yeah. And post it, maybe put it on the board that if anybody really wants to, you know, to give their input, they can attend the workshop, and just a second, yes.
And I like it, because, yeah, I'd like to hear from the people.
Right, yeah.
What's... Yeah, I did receive one phone call from a resident that expressed some concern, so I invited them to come to the council meeting to express that.
Right, yeah.
So...
Yeah, it'd kind of be nice with a workshop forum, then you're, it's more casual. You don't have to sit in front of the camera, so they may be more open to, you know, talk on it.
Yeah. No, that's a good idea. Anything further, Counselor Potenin?
No, that's it for me.
Thank you. Counselor Skinsich?
I have nothing at this time.
Thank you. Moving on to the reports from staff and boards. Fire Chief isn't here. City Attorney's not here, we'll...
No, but if I can give an update, I did talk to them about the parking lot issue with Decare, and they are going to be giving us an update at the next meeting, but they did try a different avenue, reaching out to their legal counsel, so hopefully, we're making ground on that.
Thank you. And if Chief Teacher makes it a little later, we can reflect back to him. We'll go to Public Works Operation. Sammy?
Um, just kind of cleaning up around the, from the, uh, city hall here. We have our laid-out site, and our burn piles, we've been working on there quite a bit. This week, I had the guy improve some of the, uh, taking them apart. They're not getting those, you know, like, we received all the bids and whatnot, but they're going for... Hitting the one, we were able to take them apart, scrap the housing itself, and then we'll ask them to use it for, uh, for using for the class. So, that's what we've been kind of doing. The only main issue we had, this was a couple of weeks ago, we were just outside Main Street. And, you know, there was somewhat was caused by original sand, some was caused by, you know, some of the construction. We found, now I don't know, City Council, they're about six hours into it, sweeping. And the council wanted to come up with a price and try to, try to bill them for some of that sweeping. You know, we had already contacted them, and they just didn't have the equipment available at the time to sweep. And get the dust down, they didn't have any, like, water available to spray the roads or anything on our sweeper. We didn't have the water, you know. You know, I would say about $200 an hour. So, if they have sent a team, we'll send them, we'll send them to PGM and, you know, the light, we're, you know, three hours apiece, we'll give them $700 above. You know, it's impossible, sweeping is a game. It needs to be some, some kind of equipment, some, some ops, or what else, sweeping and roads. And also, light contact, we, um, prior to that, we can ask about if, if the city had, had a kind of a cost. If needed, they could use our, uh, they could use us as a way to sweep up and down the guy over at, if that's what it was, or whatnot, in case, in case they use more than the town, because it's so bad. Prior to that, it was probably pretty good, but it just ended right up quite a bit. That one, we, 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 we got the council, they, uh, they didn't even have to pay for, you know, second place. I was just thinking, you know, the price is about $50 bucks a day to $60 bucks an hour, and I figured it'd be cheaper to, you know, to, to...
I wouldn't charge them any less than $500 bucks an hour. That was their responsibility. They should have had something up there. That's how I feel about it. It's probably written right in their contract.
And we tried going through the state, and they cut the calls to the state, and they cut the calls to each company, and they couldn't get anything up here, you know, for at least a couple of days.
Everybody's got an excuse.
You know, and that's why I, I went over there and did it, because we had a pit, it was, you know...
And it was bad.
It was bad, so...
There was a few complaints that day.
Yeah, I don't know if I got the complaints, but I knew it was bad enough to do something before I even got it.
Yeah, and if you keep letting them use it, they're gonna keep taking advantage of it.
Like, if PGM is done now, now it's, um, it's, it would be up to City Council to, if you wanna give them a price, or just say, no, you guys gotta deal, you guys deal with it, but they did, they did ask, and they told them to ask, if I know, if that's, if that's an option.
That's my, that's how I feel about it. $500 bucks for what we did an hour, and no, you can't use it anymore. Make your own arrangements.
Yeah, and that's...
Why are we the nice guy? You know, what for? What do we get out of it?
Now, my concern is, is that it breaks down during theirs, and we still got our responsibility, and now we can't fulfill our responsibility because we did their work.
Right. Try to find parts for our antique, then, you know, and that's down. No, I bet you it's in their contract, they, you know, they're supposed to supply the cleanup. But, and another thing, okay, now, when road restrictions go off, are all these roads excessive, they're, whatever, the tonnage limit, can they haul on these roads during road restrictions, on our streets?
We've always let anybody, but, I mean, the city can set up their own road restrictions, from what I understand. We don't set anything, we don't post anything, never have.
So, I don't know, maybe Matt can answer this question. Do most cities make their roads 10-ton or whatever's required, you know, for having, you know, these, we don't know if our road will withstand it on, during road restrictions, is what I'm saying, at Summit and the other ones, the streets that they use.
It depends. The cities, it varies, but a lot of cities do on their new construction, try to get the 10-ton roads, especially on the busier roads where they're having a lot of truck traffic, but not necessarily every single road is rated for 10-ton or designed for 10-ton.
The only one that I would know that might be, that might be able to take that would be New Jersey, because I think that one was subcut, I know for sure, from the bottom to the top. Iowa, you can see in, like, a couple of weeks ago, when they did get one, you know, all cracks in the road, or bleaching, bleaching water. You know, there's a spot up there that I worry about, and we're gonna rip up first court in the middle of the road. It's kind of all cracked up, you know, you can see, it's not breaking apart yet, but...
It will.
You know, it's to the point where it's questionable. You know, I did talk to Ty about running up and down the street with one of his cameras to, you know, videotape them, just so we have some good quality videotaping, so if it gets any worse, the people that go to the company, I don't know if he did, that was right around when we got a little bit of that snow last, end of last week, and it hadn't been snow-covered since. I'll touch base with them again, just to see if he did get any video. Just to, just to try to cover our butts, so where, if they start, you know, the frost coming on the ground, and the roads breaking up. Because we get some of the issues there.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know how their contract reads as far as them repairing any damage done to our streets.
Well, if, there is, we don't see that contract.
Right, I wish we could.
It's just, you know, it's, we would have to go after them as a company, we would have to go after them for...
Repairs.
Repairs, you know, these repairs cost us as much, and this is why we're, you know, and that's where the video is.
Maybe I guess I've got one.
Yes.
Uh, I agree with Counselor Potenin about the $500, but I do think that we should make that a last resort for them to have available, only because we're gonna end up having to do it if they don't anyway, and then we're gonna charge them accordingly.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Right. That's why I want it high, so then they'll think twice about, you know...
But make it, you know, don't tell them, we're not, we'll do it just this one time, and then that's it. We're gonna be stuck doing it regardless, if it's that dusty like it was previously.
But they can, you know, they can go and rent a machine, just like we have, and do it themselves, and have a guy on there eight hours a day.
Right.
You know, that's probably even written in their contract.
I doubt if they put that in there for our streets.
Oh, I would think they would, because they've worked in cities before, they know what's...
But, and, what was the other thing? Oh, I was gonna ask, if road restrictions go on, will they be running trucks anyway?
Yeah, because, uh, I would think, if, if they gotta go on colony highways, they can't, um, just because they're colony highways. Well, depends what percent it's at.
Because they're gonna be hauling material out and bringing fill in.
They're bringing it to Kiwatin.
Yeah.
Right.
And it's all, all-weather roads, so there is no restrictions on it.
I mean, we're leading straight, there's not much of a restriction, and in her state highway, it's set up to...
What, do they take this to 53 and then to 37 or whatever?
But now, when they haul in the sand, for hauling in the sand for this, this place, I don't know where their sand pit is.
Yeah, because 97 is restricted, it's only 5-ton on 97, so if they get off on these colony roads, it's restricted.
So, do we wanna, when road restrictions go on, do we wanna set the same precedence here? We don't want you running the trucks here.
Well, right, we could, but that's why I asked the condition, how thick is the asphalt on that road, and would it hold up?
Yeah, I, I, I know that this road is probably beefed up a little bit, just because it was the, the bus traffic and whatnot in the springs, in the spring, but, you know, I, it's a lot of difference of, you know, five, six buses going up it versus trucks.
Eighty thousand pounds.
And even thousands of pounds.
How much longer do you think they have?
I would say another two, three weeks anyways.
Of hauling out?
They're just starting to rip the foundations up now, I would think. I think there's still a little bit left of the, of the tear mountain. Last time was up there, it was probably two days ago, but yeah, they're starting, uh, foundations.
Well, what do you estimate the haulout is? How many weeks?
I would say two to three weeks.
Only two, three to haul all that out there?
Well, there's quite a, like I said, there's quite a bit of foundation concrete there.
Right, that's what I'm saying, I thought it'd be longer.
That's, I just, just a guess of mine, but I don't know how many trucks they're running a day, if there are four or five trucks running. And it sounds like there's an, they're an hour trip, so, hour up to Nashua. See, they were hauling bricks, the brick and concrete had believed on the Jacobson pit, not 100%.
Oh, in Wolf?
On Highway Four. I think, I don't know if it's in Wolf or Highway Four.
Oh.
You know, Jacobson was up before, don't know if that's, uh, was that little, that little river, Cedar River, that one that comes across? So, that was, uh, that was at Jacobson's pit, so I don't know.
Oh, by Wavick there?
Yeah.
Oh, that one, okay, yeah.
That, that's the one I'm assuming, I don't, I don't know, that they were bringing concrete somewhere, you know. They were bringing the demo to Nashua, and the concrete was going for, um, re-crushing at this sand pit.
Yeah, there's an industrial site like Kiwatin.
Yeah.
I just saw it last week.
So, yeah, I, like I say, the, I, the council wants us to try to, try to bill them $1,500 bucks for three hours, or whatever price you want me to talk to, but we can look at sending them an invoice for that.
Yeah, because we wanna discourage them from using it a lot.
I would, I'd support that for $500 bucks an hour, definitely.
Right, yeah.
We had total of six hours, and I figured they, we were down at that end, we were down at this end, we didn't use streets.
Well, I mean, whatever, if you wanted to split it between the two, Harvey wanted to do it for now, but...
That's what I was gonna do, split three hours of three hours.
From now on, it'll just be, like you say, it'll just be vites, so...
Yeah, but it, when we did well, it was bad, all of that. Other than that, they just have, uh, on the...
We need some kind of ball field.
Ball field court?
Yeah, that's, oh, that's, that's okay. Yeah, I had a hole for, sorry, the A-line. It's been probably ten to twelve years, at least, since we got some A-line from these, for these ball fields. I noticed, uh, when I was dragging them this summer, that it was getting really thin in certain spots on the ball fields, and I was picking up a lot of rock and mud on, um, because of, because of, uh, that A-line was getting so thin. So, I was, I know there's some money in the, uh, the rec fund, um, you know, that, that we can use. And then the A-line has come out of the root, it comes out of this, we had trucking just for the, just in the past. So, I was down, I put a load on each field here, so one load is about 18 yards, it'd be about $1,544. And let's say we've gotten by for, what, 10 years, the last, last couple of weeks.
I'll make that motion to get the A-lime in there.
I'll support it.
Motion by Counselor Potenin, supported by Counselor Skinsich to approve the purchase of the A-lime for the ball fields.
And then the nice thing is, I can get it now, we can dump it down the road, the road restrictions are still not on, and I'm ready for screening, we'll be ready for screening.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. None. Motion carries three to zero. Do you have anything else, Sam?
No, I do not.
Thank you. And we don't have campground or library. We'll move on to the advisory boards. Paul?
I have a few updates. So, the first one is actually our recommendation from our last board meeting, which is CB 1 2024. That was for the recommendation for pricing for the special event camping area. Similar to campground pricing, we have to do this once a year. Last year, when we set the pricing, we set it at $25, and there was a discussion about, we didn't know whether it was enough, whether it was fair. And so, we brought all of that into consideration, as well as how it was used and what we paid for it. And we came up with the, uh, daily rate of just a flat $30 per each one of those sites. A regular tent site is $29, and you can't put an RV in that. So, we figured it was comparable to what we have at the, at Sherwood, as far as the utilities and the amenities that would be there. So, we thought it was reasonable. Also with that, I've attached the, it's basically exactly the same from what we had last year. Each of the sites has a special set of rules. The big change is that there's no fires that are permitted in the special events area. And I think there might have been, there might have been one other small change that was a difference from the regular campground, but it's lifted exactly from last year's rules, so just wanted to get reapproval on those.
Did we have any issues with fires in that other area?
No, we, I mean, they, as far as I know, unless, unless Sam, I mean, you did the, any of the cleanup after last year's crawl for the cure, I don't think there was any problems with fire pits or anything like that.
Oh, like in that extra area?
Yeah.
I don't think we allowed it in that area.
Yeah, I don't think so, but...
Unless they were fully, I don't think we allowed it, unless they were fully encased.
Off the ground type grill.
Yeah, we had allowed it if it was a propane one, that you could turn fully off, that didn't leave any marks on the grass or anything like that.
Yeah.
So, and that's mostly because the spacing of them is physically a lot closer.
Right.
And I, I don't know that I would allow it at all, just for the, you know, the, the...
Cleaning up afterwards. Yep.
I was just curious, because I didn't, I didn't hear anything, so...
Yep. So, the only other modification, and we'll take care of this as a matter of setup, the Health Department asked that we change some of the locations of the porta potties, which I think we're already planning on doing anyway. They wanted at least one more that was closer to the actual, so it's just a matter of distributing them when it gets time to setting up, so...
Cool.
So, if we get an approval on this, I can go ahead and get this built in the system and have it ready.
I'll make a motion on it.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Motion by Counselor Skinsich, supported by Counselor Potenin to approve, uh, what you described, Paul, all that.
Yep, it's, the, the motion is actually listed in the document, is to approve the, the rate of $30 per night, plus the same camping rules as last year.
Correct, yes. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose say nay. Non-motion carries three, zero.
Thank you. I will get that up and ready. They're planning on doing the start of the registration on or about April 1st. I have to check my calendar to see when their next organizing date is, but I'll be on that call with them as well, so...
Paul, on that, on that, is that for that event permit? Is that what that was?
Yep, yep, that's the special event permit.
Now, do you have to reuse the, the spaces or anything like that for this requirement?
No, so I believe Jill resubmitted the permit, it's been approved with last year's exact same setup. Yep, yep. And the way that I'm gonna have them set up in the system is, we'll have them set up in three batches. We'll have like an A group, a B group, and a C group. So, we'll give priority to the ones that got used last year, which is in the field, those are the easiest ones. And then we can choose which one will be the second priority, I would, I would assume would be the parking lot that's next to the rec, uh, rec center would be the second. And then... And then the third would be the ones that we have tandem running up in the, up on the road. If we have to do those ones, we have to make the road into a one-way.
Maybe we'll try not to do those ones.
Yeah, and we can, we can release them in stages as we need to. So... So, the other one, uh, that we had, uh, so there's actually three items. So, the second item I had was, um, the campground board is putting together a, what we hope to be a monthly dashboard for the council and for the campground board. Um, this gives us a, kind of a set of consistent metrics for us to be able to look at. I'm sure you appreciate having data presented to you, so you know, kind of know what's going on. So, the one that we've been working on, and this is just a draft, we can certainly clean it up a little bit, but it's broken into four sections. Um, the first section is basically our revenue to date. And so you'll see, um, you know, the, the revenue for January, actually through February fifth, I'll be able to update it, was right around fifteen thousand, and that's based on the deposits that come in, um, and, you know, reservation fees that come in. Um, I think, I, I peaked this morning, I think we were at like twenty-two to twenty-four, um, for the year so far, so we're doing pretty well. Um, the second section, um, and I apologize for the small print, I'll have to get this into a better format, gives you that breakout of what is the reservations that come in, any add-ons, so that's like firewood purchases, the amounts that come from reservations fees, the amounts that come from lock fees, and then the overall totals. It has it broken out as far as how much is the processing fee, which is, as we had set up, is paid, paid for by consumers rather than the city, so you can see, you know, all of those numbers of what we're saving and the different revenue line items that are coming in, um, by those groupings. That's a standard report, um, so we can, it's very easy for either the board or Wendy or whoever we have doing these reports, to basically just cut and paste the data without having to change it. Um, the third section, uh, is kind of a review of the occupancy. And so, I just kind of arbitrarily picked any weekend that had an, an occupancy of more than seventy percent. So, as you can imagine, as we get closer to the, the season, we'll have a lot more of those weekends, but then you'll be able to see what is the percent occupied that the campground is for weekend one, weekend two, weekend three. Um, and I kind of figured that seventy percent was kind of a good ballpark. I can switch that up or down depending upon, um, what you want, um, that's kind of up to you. And then the third, or the fourth and final part is a reporting of, this is the, to be clear, um, this is the customer-reported source that they came from. So, we ask the question when they book, how did you hear about us or why are you booking today? And so, they have, they have a drop-down list to select from, and every customer is required to do this through the reservation process, so it's a required field. And so, it gives us some perspective of what things in terms of how we're advertising, how we're connecting, um, you know, what's, what's driving them to come here. Um, the good story in all of this is you'll see at the bottom, the returning guest for this first report was sixty point eight percent. That's a pretty phenomenal number, um, to have that much loyalty coming back year after year after year. Um, that's a, an extremely good statistic for us to have. Um, so, but it also shows all of the other, uh, reasons why people come to us. So, I guess I'd, I'd like to stop here and see if there's any feedback from you, uh, as far as if there are any things that you've thought of that would be helpful for the council to have on a regular basis. And again, this would be a monthly report, so you'll, we'll start to get some frequency and be able to see kind of how the numbers shift over time.
Yeah, this is very thorough. I'm sure no council's ever seen anything like this before in Gilbert.
Well, a large part of this is, is when we chose the new tools, we specifically focused on some of the reporting capabilities. And so, this is one of the things that the new system can bring to us that the old one did not.
One question I had on the reservation, do they lose their reservation if they cancel, or their money? Do they have to put the entire fee down, or is it just a partial fee reserve?
There, so the reservation fee, when, when you make a reservation, they're required to put the first night down as a deposit. They have to pay the reservation fee, and then they pay upfront for any add-ons. So, if they pre-purchase wood, if they pre-purchase any of the other things that we've set up for pre-purchase, they pay for that in advance. In the case of a refund, obviously if they pre-purchase something like firewood, we fully refund that because they won't be using it, so we give them all the money back. Um, the reservation fee, a portion of that, the three fifty that we end up paying for the system, does not get refunded to them, but the balance, depending on if they bought, if they made the reservation online or if they booked directly with Wendy, the balance of it, whether it's six or eight dollars, that gets refunded to them. We keep the non-refundable, the part that we have to pay out, um, for booking it.
So, the one-night fee that they paid, we would keep that?
The one-night fee, I believe, we have a fixed, I may get this wrong. I believe we have a fixed ten-dollar cancellation fee. I'm, I'm not sure, so the balance of the one night that they play, would, would get refunded to them.
Okay.
So...
That's the only question I had, so...
No, I, I think it's great, looks, a lot of info on here. The only thing, you know, with the revenue for the month of like January, you can do each month. Can you do a year-to-date, just like a single line, like underneath that overall total?
I can, I can find a way to put that in there, yeah.
See if we can, otherwise, no, that's awesome, looks great.
Okay, um, so we'll make some modifications there. Our, our next meeting is on Wednesday, so I'll have the numbers updated and as soon as we get that. The intention is after we get, get it done on Wednesday night, we'll flip it over to Jill so that it can be included in the, in the council packet, so... Um, and then the third and last one is, so, this was not necessarily unique to, uh, to the Firefly system, but we came across a situation, um, and unfortunately, I'm somewhat personally responsible for this. Um, we had a Sherwood guest that booked several weekends, um, and then I hired her as my campground host, so she had to cancel her reservations. Um, unfortunately, in the process of her moving, the card that she used was also changed in the system and was not able to accept the refund for. Um, and so the only way we can give her a refund is via a check. Well, lo and behold, we didn't have a process for refunding a customer via check. Um, and so Jill and I had a couple of emails going back and forth, um, about audit process, make sure that we were able to validate this. And so essentially, we have come up with a process that we'll put into the campground operation procedures, that if this comes up, essentially, the park host will do whatever they can to try and refund the money to a credit card first. If that does not work, then they'll have to email City Hall with the name, address, phone number of the guest, their reservation confirmation information, and the dollar amounts to be refunded. And then Jill and, and/or anybody else in staff that, that needs to have access, can have access, to be able to go in, take that reservation information in the system and validate it to make sure that it's accurate, and then process the check through the reimbursement process. The campground fund does not have a checkbook, so it would have to be a check that would have to come from the general fund, and then the campground account would have to refund or would have to transfer to the general fund as part of that. So, um, I don't know if that needs an approval from the council to, to write that as a policy, um, or if it's something that you want me to just work directly with Jill on to make sure that it happens in a way that can be audited and have a paper trail on it?
Think that's just part of the system.
What I'd like approval of, so we don't have to wait for approval between meetings, you also don't have to wait two or three weeks for a check, or we can just cut it, or we can include it with the consent agenda, but we can send them the check back right away, so we're not waiting.
If it's under a certain dollar amount, would you have to anyway?
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, under five hundred, we can approve it, but just so that we're not delaying the, the money back, you know, quicker, just to have something following.
So, you want a motion to approve this, all you're doing here right now?
To come up with a refund policy.
Yeah.
So...
I'll make that motion to have the refund policy put into place. You two guys work it out.
Work it out to come up with a policy that's...
You'll see this again when we present the standard operation procedure, which is, I will forewarn you, is now up to forty-five pages. It's probably gonna be closer to seventy, so, you'll get a book pretty soon, and it will be in there.
I'll support it.
Moved by Councilor Poten, supported by Councilor Skinsich to direct, or to have Clerk Zoller and Mr. Skurvik come up with a policy for a refund process if credit cards aren't able to be credited. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Post say nay. None. Motion carries, three to zero.
And then the last parting gift I'll leave you with is, uh, we are, we've gotten three responses to, um, the bid for a new firewood vendor. We were notified back in January that our existing firewood vendor is no longer in the business of providing it for campgrounds. So, um, I've got a, a chart that I'll be reviewing with the campground board on Wednesday, um, and hopefully we'll have a pretty solid recommendation. I talked to Sam today about some complications with potential storage, because we'll have to order in larger quantities, but I think we can handle it. Um, we've got some solutions to, to be able to talk about, so, um, just look forward, forward to that on your next meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul, for all you do.
Yep. And on to Clerk Zoller.
Thank you. Um, I don't have a whole lot of updates, but I'll do a financial, um, rundown. Looking at the paperwork I'd handed out earlier here, we have a hundred and forty-four thousand, seven forty-eight oh nine, and checking plus deposits puts us at a hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred eighty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents in the campground. General checking, we started at a hu- seven hundred nineteen thousand, nine oh three, thirty-five, less tonight's consent agenda and about nineteen thousand, eight hundred forty-six dollars and twenty-four cents in checks that still need to clear, leaves us with five twenty-three, five fifty, four fifty. Um, again, in May, we'll start getting our St. Louis County property tax deposit, so I think we're sitting pretty good. Um, we have four hundred eighty-one thousand, twenty-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents in our savings. That is particularly for our water treatment plant, and then we still have our CD that's accumulating, um, compound interest. We haven't gotten another deposit since the last one, so we're still sitting at two hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred nineteen dollars and eighty cents. Um, other than that, you know, voting is on Tuesday, everybody get out and vote. We will be open nine to three on Saturday for anybody that still wants to cast an absentee ballot, and that's kind of where we're at.
Excellent. Get out and vote. Thank you. On to old business, the wastewater treatment plant, update water treatment plant, the parcel ownership.
So, the wastewater treatment plant, um, we've been kind of, have moved up down there. We've all set, set up some, uh, sent up, uh, one of the reps, and we changed some parameters. Um, and, uh, seems to be running, running a little bit. It seems to be running good, it's just the last year of running the plant this way. So, we're, uh, we're, we're doing pretty good. Still having those same issues, so, you know, just like them from, from that. That, uh, we're gonna meet with S D H down there, they'll take a plan tour, I think on the fifth, at ten thirty. So, um, that, that's about all we, we got there. Uh, water treatment plant, um, that's moving along too, or having, you know, our monthly meetings usually on the twentieth, twenty-first. We've been having meetings, um, there's been a couple of, uh, chemical, uh, operations meetings in there on that. One of the, one of the issues that we've cleaned up is this parcel. Um, that's, uh, been put in the, um, it, it shows us as one twenty-fourth owner, and S D H was concerned about that, so, um, I don't know if we'd have to direct the others to looking into that and try to dig up some, um, uh, finding on that parcel. For the water plant, let's say there's, our lime ponds are basically totally on that parcel, and so, is the front part of the... That'd be parts of the well house one and two, or I would have to, that one parcel, so. I don't know if that's to be a motion or a review that they're referring to. I was hoping Brian would keep here, but...
Yeah, I think it, it would have to be a motion, but could we motion to have Jill contact him to...
Yeah, that's fine.
Look into it, and I know we're trying to get another meeting to, that we can add it to then, if we have that direction.
I know that we've tried to go with different routes with, uh, the lawyers themselves, so that's all right. If we don't bring it forward, we're, we'd be at a meeting and having a formal motion, maybe better, but...
Yeah.
So, yeah, so, but it should be looked at because there is, you know, stuff that we need to get cleaned up on this parcel. We gotta make sure we're...
Right.
Have to reach out to a title company so we can have them, you know, look quicker. I mean, maybe it's already taken care of, but we're still happy after the paperwork.
What, who was the other property owner that?
It's like one twenty-fourth, so it's only like there's...
Who is it? Who is it?
Owners, is that what you mean, there's one twenty-fourth?
Yeah, there's, uh, the documentation that we came up with showed that the city was one twenty-fourth of an owner, so there's twenty-four signatures out there someplace that, now, it is possible that has been resolved, that something might be different than the information we could find, as Jill suggested. That would be, if the title company dug into it, they'd be able to get a little more detail on it. And the biggest thing is if we have to get, well, like Sam alluded to, your, your lime ponds and some of the other things are currently on that property, we probably can avoid doing any real major work on that property for the, the upcoming project, but for the project after that, we're gonna need to do some work there. And so, if, we want to make sure we've got all the property squared away before we start doing anything out there, so...
So, if there's twenty-four other owners, that sounds like fee owners.
Well, it does, yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
So, it's a fee owner property, probably.
Is that, so, you want to, you don't have to go to the lawyer, can we just pay the title company?
You could contact the fee owners directly too. I, I don't know what, you know, which way, you know, go about it. Yeah, right, yeah.
Maybe I'll pull Sharon in too, just because she does the real estate for us, she might be able to direct us as well.
So, do we need a motion to direct Brian?
Well, I think if we handle it on our end first and then...
So, have a motion just to...
Staff to look into with the title company to...
Or attorney?
Yeah, just, yeah.
So, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilor Poten.
I'll second.
Supported by Councilor Skinsich to direct Clerk Zoller and Attorney Lindsay to look into the property of the one twenty-fourth ownership to clarify. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Post say nay. None. Motion carries, three to zero. That all you had, Sam? Thank you. Uh, move on to section twelve point oh seven of the city charter, the Vacation of Streets, second reading, and vote. I was hoping Brian would be here, we're uncertain if we can do the vote, maybe you might know.
No, we need four out of five for our vacation, so we have to...
Oh, for vacation, you need four out of five, okay.
So, we'll have to table this.
Do the second reading and do the vote at the next meeting, because it is second reading and/or vote, so we can vote at the next meeting.
So, yeah, so, tonight's meeting will be considered the second reading for the section twelve point oh seven of the Vacation of Streets.
So, you don't have to read it and then vote, you can vote after another week, two weeks from now? Are we sure on that? I would just table it, I think, to make sure we don't have to redo it twice, I don't know. Because there's no hurry for this, is there?
No, just, it's cleaning up the paperwork, so they have a clear...
We could do this at the special meeting also that we're having.
Correct.
Yeah.
No, no, it's got to be a regular meeting. It's got to be, yeah. The clean did say it had to be a regular meeting.
I mean, we, if you want to read it, and then hopefully it's going to be right that we can vote on the following.
It doesn't matter. I guess it really doesn't matter because we can't do anything with it tonight anyway.
Exactly, so. Let's table it until our next meeting in March thirteenth. No action.
No action, okay.
And then, I gotta find it. The first reading for the Sherred Forest Recreation, ninety-one point one-two B eleven. And since that's in here, I don't have to read it. I like that. But that was introduced on our January twenty-third meeting. So tonight's, or February twenty-seventh, which that meeting was recessed for tonight, will be considered the first reading. Second reading will be at our next council. Okay, I'm looking in February. I'm seeing thirteenth and twelve. Wait a minute. Okay, yes, March twelfth. And then. We'll do for old business, the approval of the bids from the electric meters. We had received four, four bids. And now we don't have to read them off, right? We can just. Accept the bids that were received, the four bids for the overflow property that we had for the electric meters. Surplus property, that's what I was looking for. Did you see them? And the rest then? Scrapping, yeah.
Saving some, I'll see.
So if there's any upgrades to the campground, we swap them home for the weekend or something.
I don't guess. I'd have to see them. Can always throw another one away or put it up for a bid again, whatever. Just need a motion for approval on that then?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Motion by Councillor Skinsitch.
I'll second it.
Supported by Councillor Potenon to accept the four bids for the meters that we received. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Post say nay. None. Motion carries three to zero. And then we'll go on to new business, S E H engineering recommended. Thanks for waiting.
Problem. So in your packet you have three quotes that we got from three different consulting firms. Background on that, the environmental review came back. Chippewa wanted some additional information, wanted us to do some additional review on the historic nature of the water treatment plant. And so moving ahead, we were, we contacted three consulting firms that do that work and asked them to provide us quotes. Quite a spread on the three quotes. I was a bit surprised. That said, after we reviewed the quotes and reviewed the, kind of compared the scope, we reached out and talked to the two that had the lower fee. And it really, just talking with them and reviewing their scope, and you can tell just by looking at the proposal, the one was much more thorough on what they put in than the one from Blondo. So based on, and I haven't had any personal discussions with any of them. I'm relaying the information that I received from our other engineers and that have been working on it. They're recommending that based on their discussions and the proposal that was provided and the scope that we think is going to be needed to get the work done that we hire the second low rather than the low. We can certainly work with the low if that's the direction that you choose to go. We're a little bit concerned that we're going to end up coming back saying, hey, this wasn't included in their scope originally, and they're going to need to get some additional fee to do these additional steps. And so that's why we're just saying, we think what's included in Blondo's proposal is what it's going to take to get the work done and get it done. I believe it's an hourly contract. I'd have to look, but either way, we feel like that bid had everything in it that we were going to need to get the work done up to the point of, obviously if Chippewa says they need more information even after all of this, that's a, that's a whole different discussion. But so we're recommending that the city hire Blondo to do the work. And I can certainly try to answer questions if you have them beyond that.
I don't have any questions. But I agree with you. It's to make, if you guys are comfortable with Blondo because they can get the job done the first time versus having to go back and reach out. I agree.
I do too.
And with this process, the funding we got will cover it.
It should all roll into the same, it'll all roll into the project costs, yes.
Yeah, perfect.
I'll make a motion to accept Blondo Consulting's quote for twelve thousand, five hundred.
Motion by Councillor Skinsitch to approve Blondo Consulting for the project of twelve thousand, five hundred.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councillor Potenon. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Post say nay. None. Motion carries three to zero. And you'll be notifying them then or?
Yeah, we'll take care of that, yep.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks again for waiting. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh nine, special appropriation of MPFA application. And I don't think I have that.
Is this the one evaluation, this one? That's a little more looking at it.
So they're basically allowing us to make applications to look at the four bowls these, which will be funding for water treatment.
Oh, okay, yeah. I don't see it in my, but that's.
Yeah, that is.
Do you want separate? I suppose do them separately, huh?
Yeah, I suppose we should.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution, resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh nine.
Authorizing the City of Gilbert to submit information to the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority, MPFA, and to enter into a six point, oh, six million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant agreement with the MPFA for its water system improvement project.
So these are the bonding bills?
Yep, the bonding bills that.
It's already been in.
Were approved.
Legislatures are approved, yeah.
Yes.
I see. Okay.
So motion by Councillor Skinsitch.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Supported by Councillor Potenon to approve the application. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Post say nay. None. Motion carries three to zero. And then resolution twenty twenty-four dash ten, City of Gilbert hereby applying to Minnesota Public Facilities Authority for a loan from the drinking revolving loan improvements to its municipal drinking water system as described in the loan application.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councillor Potenon.
I'll second.
Supported by Councillor Skinsitch. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Post say nay. None. Motion carries three to zero. I don't know where mine went. And then on to the Zoom discussion. As everybody knows, last, most know that we're at the council meeting, we were hacked during our Zoom meeting. And the discussion is, do we want to continue with Zoom or eliminate it or how to regulate it moving forward?
Right. We'll still always need it for individuals, engineers, other end vendors or things that might want to come in and talk with us without paying the drive up. We can utilize Zoom, so we'll never eliminate.
Right, right.
But can some of those meetings be held just for phone by phone? You know, do we really need to Zoom or can you just have, you know, a phone? I don't know, Matt. You know, is it, do we really need Zoom for you guys, you know, for what work you're doing? I don't know.
Well, there's times where it would be nice to have, but I, you're going to be, the only one that'll have the link at that point would be the person that's going to be Zooming. And I think that's what Jill was getting at. So it's not going to be a broadcast Zoom link across everybody. So there's still opportunities where you could use Zoom, you could use, there's other platforms out there too if you'd like, but having the ability to get people to come in and have that face-to-face contact, I guess, is, would be nice. Individually, of course.
So what you're kind of talking is just going, like, if anybody, any, if Paul's down in the cities, or if, for instance, he could use Zoom on our meeting, it's just not the general public that's going to be able to do it anymore.
Right. And statistically for the last, I mean, I've been here almost two years and really it's all Wendy and Sue are the only ones that ever dial in unless we've invited somebody specifically. So nobody from the general public's really utilizing, at least not in the last year and a half.
So does that change anything as far as the cost to the city? No, it's all the same cost then?
We can do a, you know, where you have a password and things like that, but utilizing that some other more session. So we wouldn't get rid of the cost because we still, we still utilize it for other avenues.
Yeah, it just wouldn't be public access to it anymore.
And I like, I mean, I think it's good. You've got two minutes worth of something, whoever, to drive all the four hours to drive up there.
And then sit for.
Right.
Hour and a, well, an hour, yeah, before you get, yeah, I get that.
So a couple of things the city could do to make it still an accessible tool and not subject to a hack. I'll tell you right now, probably the, and if Randy hasn't said it already, probably the biggest thing that contributed to the hack is that we have a published meeting ID on the city's website that is the same ID for every meeting. That's like giving somebody, that's like saying, here's your key to your house, come rob me. That, we should not do that.
If you don't publish it, it defeats the purpose of having a convenient town.
Right, right.
So there's the dilemma. And I don't want people calling me the week before saying, what's the ID, what's the ID, what's the ID? That is inefficient for sale.
Right, right. And I, I do, I do understand that. So if there are people that regularly want to or need to come in from Zoom, that I think is something that your office could easily handle because there's not that many people. Like you said, there's, there's a handful. And I think that can be managed very easily. But, you know, now that we have them as engineers, like, do you want to really pay for their time and mileage to come up here versus having them sit on a call?
Most of the time they're local.
You know, yeah.
The good thing is we have local people now.
Yeah. But the other is, you know, Wendy is in Arizona, so like she can't be here in the, in the winter and.
Yeah. Do we even need her in the winter?
Right. You know, maybe January, February, March, when things, when reservations are starting to come in, certainly not November, December.
Report on to people like they do in Hight Lake. They don't have their, their, people don't start till May. They just give a report.
That's all.
I mean, you know, we can utilize that option. Or if they, like I said, the library, if she wants to give us a report, we do it, or if she wants to do it herself. It doesn't really matter.
I think her contract reads that she's only supposed to give, or asked to give a report during the summer months when she's actually down there. And it's only one meeting a month, if I recall the contract.
Pardon? Every month, but we can alter them and that.
Right, yeah.
It's, if you have nothing to report, it's foolish to make the call in. It's to say, I have nothing to report.
Yeah, and she could do just by email. And if there is something she wants to discuss or needs to discuss, she can let us know and then obviously we let her in and we discuss, but.
So I, I, I would encourage the council to not get rid of it entirely. Still, because it is still a valuable tool in the right way. I, I would also like, there are times when working sessions where you have to call somebody in specifically for, you know, whatever issue of the day you're dealing with. You know, so there's, there's a lot of reasons to still use the tool, but clamp down from a security standpoint and only give the meeting ID to the people that need it.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think.
We're only going to need to have a password.
Right.
That's the option, you know, where you don't publish the password.
So you have a number, but you also need the password for that number.
Yep.
So then you know who you're speaking to, so you can identify them.
Whatever way is safer.
Well, yeah, whatever, so we can avoid that. And I agree that it is a good tool to have because we've had many, many, many meetings that people are out of the area and I'd hate to have them come here and have to pay their mileage, so.
Right. Well, I mean, even, you know, while I know the rules are different for counselors, but, you know, illness, like somebody gets COVID or something like that, like being able to call in for that purpose, you still can.
Yes, you can. You just have to post it. But they will be electronic and wherever you are posting from, you need to be able to allow public in if they show shows. But you can as a counselor dial in electronically as long as it's posted that way ahead of time and you're comfortable with the public coming in.
Well, if they want to come in, if I got COVID, Dave, power to you, I guess.
Coming in, right, coming in my house?
If you are wanting to be as present and vote, they need, you need to be able to, anybody that wants to come there would have.
Is supposed to be able to access.
Just a question, is that what changed with the COVID rules that used to be? Because when we were doing it before, it was just a thing. If you got sick, you could do it from home and vote or whatever. Okay.
But you have to be in person to vote? Is that what you're saying? You can, you can vote through Zoom?
Vote through an electronic source.
Oh, you can.
It's published that way in a meeting.
Yeah, it's got to be advertised.
Like in the agenda, it has to be advertised or something? Three days before the meeting or something like that?
I believe the intention is that, is that the, the voting public needs to know how to contact the individual in the event that they want to.
I see.
So I, I, yeah, I agree. I think we just keep it, just try and lock down our security system a little better. Perfect.
So we don't even need a motion then, right? No action?
No, no action. Just discussion from being hacked.
Yeah.
Well, I had for miscellaneous and we've been discussing the Lake Orbigan with the drought we've had with the lack of snow moisture from last fall. Water levels are down tremendously. From what I recall, when I last worked in, in the mine pit was down, when they dredged and made the beach, I'm guessing it's about three to four feet lower than that lowest point. So it's, it's really low and that's concerning. So the city is looking into that with the help of S E H and we're going to try to see what's going on and, and find hopefully some kind of solution so we can make it useful. So.
Or pray for rain.
Or, yeah.
Or what?
Pray for rain. Do a lot of prayers. We need moisture.
We need forty days and forty nights.
We need moisture.
And maybe just update to everyone to keep an eye on the burning permit situation. I know it's freaking out here where they are restricting burning to camp fires only. I know it's freaking out here where they are restricting burning to camp fires only down south, but I feel we'll be shortly behind them.
I thought some bans were even on at this point.
I did hear on the radio today, the announcement to some areas, but they didn't announce the areas. So yes, please be diligent, if you have any fires in the yard, make sure it's safe, please. It is very dry out there. And that's all I've got.
Did we want to discuss the whistle?
The what?
The siren.
Oh.
I am still working on it. Yeah, I know I, I discussed a little bit with, you guys last conference meeting. I think one, one quote came back at forty grand for a siren. The new one, one place in town. I can call back and try to get two, two spots. So one would be in town here, one would be outside the open start meeting center. And that would reach out to, you know, westward, Camp Town, some of the people in New Drive, you know, of different points in that area, to accomplish those, those people in town too. But I did not receive a call for that, I, I just got the, the, some, some, uh, back to me. So once I, once I, uh, hear back the price, I will, uh, the council will. Um, there's a couple other vendors, I talked to Anthony and the cop, their department. And keep looking in contact with a couple other vendors that I'm interested in, try to get some calls, but we're probably looking at forty to, forty to sixty grand. You know, I don't know if there would be, I mean, I talked to Matt on the side and see if there's any, you know, any type of funding availability or whatnot. There's, I'm still thinking, but I will.
I think it's something we should move forward with myself, especially after cell phones went down, that last week.
You're right, right, and not everybody has the same features on their phones or like me knows how to use it, I've set it up. But yeah, that's, yeah, keep looking into it and I know I had a, a conversation with the chief and he recommends it. But doesn't have a direction of where to go, obviously, but it is a safety concern.
Yeah, once I, once I get a couple of prices, I can have a vendor or somebody come up and meet a couple of us at City Hall there and the people will pick out, you know, what they can provide us.
Excellent.
So, so Matt, does Virginia have a, a whistle like that for, you know, tornadoes or anything, do you know? Civil defense, do they have that? Do you know? Have you ever, in your discussions, Matt, been at meetings, did they ever talk about that?
I'm not sure. I would think they would, but I'm not sure. I know Evolit does.
I want to say for whether they do.
They do, yeah.
Trying to think, I don't remember when I worked there.
Yeah, if they had a whistle.
Yeah, I, I don't remember. I would suspect they would, but.
Well, they could be like us where they just quit working and you just let them go, you know.
I know the logistics goes off because I hear it. They still open at nine o'clock.
One of the companies, the company that I'm working with right now is one who's spelled out.
Yeah. So, yeah, yeah, let's keep digging for information and.
And also funding.
And funding, absolutely, that, that would be nice. That would be nice. Anything else?
One quick thing I have.
Yep.
Uh, have you heard any news of your, the new dump truck coming in at all?
No, I have not.
Okay. Just thought of it, no.
It's okay, more interest, right, Jill? More interest.
It's funny how that changed because it was supposed to be here, what, last month? Or this month?
Yeah.
Okay. It was going to be delivered to, um, to Little Falls, Little Falls.
Oh, I thought they were saying February because it was, they had at one time.
It's supposed to be December and then March.
Oh.
I just have one last thing, I want to thank Tara for, I believe seventeen years of service. I was going to say it earlier and it just brain fogged.
Did we accept her resignation?
That's the other thing, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, we didn't do that.
Oh, we didn't, oh, jeez, yeah, okay.
Sorry, Tara.
Was thinking we did.
Take that back.
We take it back, we're not accepting it. All right, yes. For new business, item E. Uh, is the Tara Reinerson's resignation effective three fifteen of twenty-four? She has a twenty-two.
Oh, she's begon that for two years.
Well, yeah, are we paying her?
Wait, that could be added to, to, uh, for a new lead, um, that's a pop interview.
Yeah, that's the other discussion we should have is if we can internally post for this position. Um, accept her resignation and then.
And then approve.
I don't feel the need to change any, anything aspect of the job or anything like that. I think, uh, you know, same, same everything, let's start the internal process.
And Trudy has the A license, so she does qualify for a lead.
If she does, if she is going to put in, which I feel she is, um, she does have all the licenses and they have everything.
For a lead position?
For a lead position, now, I don't know if council would want to do a, do an interview. Goes through the interview process.
I would like to, I think we should.
Before, um, with, with, uh, with lead steps anyways, you know, I want the interview process. And I, for this job, the lead tariff to.
Yeah, I, I think we should keep it, yes. Even though it's internal, I, I think we should. So we'll do separate, I guess, we'll accept and then do another one for approving. For the internal posting. So first motion would be to accept Tara Reiners, Reinerson's letter of resignation.
I'll make a motion for that.
Yeah.
Motion by Councilor Skinsich, supported.
Yeah, I'll, I'll support and I'm just sorry to say leave because she's, she knew what she was doing on there, she held it together.
She, yes.
Lots of appreciation for that.
Yes, for the build of that wastewater treatment plant and issues we've had between her and Sammy, they, they were able to keep it functioning. So greatly appreciated and I wish her the best of luck with whatever endeavors she is moving on to.
You know, maybe she can sleep at night, Trudy.
Yeah, yeah. That's hopefully. Any further discussion? Is seconded by Councilor Poten, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. None, motion carries three to zero. And then another motion to approve the internal posting for the wastewater treatment plant lead position.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilor Poten.
I'll second.
Supported by Councilor Skinsich to direct Clerk Zoller to post for that position internally. And but do we have, is, do we have the motion for the process? Or just for the posting?
It's always nice, um, if you guys, if we made a committee right away, um, because if, if we, if we post it, say, tomorrow or, yeah, or Monday, it's a set open for seven to ten days. And then, uh, we can have an interview, um, you know, probably before the next meeting if, if we wanted to.
So there's no public listing, just internally?
Just internally, if, if it's approved, then we don't have to go public, so.
That would be, it has to, it has to be posted for seven workdays or is it just seven days?
It's just seven days.
So it would be up right around our next council meeting?
Oh, so we could do it then?
If it goes on Monday.
Yeah, so like I say, if, if the council could want to, you know, we could do, uh, two or three or four, four of them both to interview and just like we've done in the past. You know, come up with some questions and, and, uh, have, if there was any internal posting to do either, and let's go to see the question.
Yeah, with, uh, directing the post and do, well, we don't have many to pick for the council or for the committee, so.
Ten, you know, ten days is up actually the day out for our next meeting, so we could set it up.
Yeah, we'll do that. Because then I'll, I mean, I'm, I'm suspecting what I'm going to look for, yeah.
So you're talking about the twenty-fifth then to approve her, is that what you're saying? Not the eleventh, what's the twenty-fifth?
The committee meets, the committee at the next meeting.
Yeah, at the next meeting and then we'd probably approve it on the twenty-sixth, yeah.
Oh, twenty-sixth.
When was, when is her last date?
Fifteenth.
We can always set a special meeting in between her, if we want to.
True. True. But I, it's, nice thing is she's there and she knows already the plan, so she's going to be acting those four days or a couple of weeks, actually. So, yeah. Let's see, we'll pick the committee on the twelfth then. But any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. None, motion carries three to zero. Councilor Skinsich. Right?
I think so.
Yeah, because, because then we went into discussion and I said again, Councilor Poten seconded it, so. So much, so much to keep track of. But again, thank you Tara for your devotion to the City of Gilbert at the plant and keeping it going. Greatly appreciate it. Now that's all I've got. Anybody else have anything? Have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Moved by Councilor Skinsich, supported by Councilor Poten to adjourn our city council meeting at six twenty-four PM. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. None, motion carries three to zero.